Read the. Read the notice as it appeared in the newspaper. Notice of public hearing, thank you planning board, date Thursday, September eleventh, twenty twenty five. Application for special turn at sixty six Garth Union Street. In accordance with master launch forty eight, the findings. The tiny or zoning by law, the planning board behold, a public hearing of Thursday, September eleventh, twenty twenty five at seven P M. They consider an application received July thirty first, twenty twenty five of green leaf energy. On behalf of Robert Pitco. For a special permit for property located at sixty six North Union Street for the following industrial use. Large scale ground. Bounced its solar photovoltaic installation. Public hearing will be held in person, town hall and three forty eight Main Street Plainfield, Mass. Access to remote participation via Zoom if available will be posted on the town's website. The application is available on the town website and a copy is available to town offices. Written public comments sent by email to the planning board at three oh four Main Street or by email to planning at town. The thing field, the mast dot U S that are received prior to the public hearing will be read and entered into the public record. This was posted on August twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. I want to introduce the planning board, first of all, June Monwell. Kathy Vilkins. Jerry Little, our secretary. I'm the chair, Peter LaPointe, and Judy Cole is our alternate. So with the with our alternate, we have a five member board. And. So we have a full complement to to decide on this process. Just in terms of process, I'm going to ask the applicant to do a presentation of the project. Following their presentation, I'm going to hold a board for questions that they have relative to the application. Then I'm going to read. The comments that we received so that everybody has the benefit of all the information that we received today before you ask questions. Then I will open the floor to to public comment. All comments should be directed to the children. And if necessary, we'll refer to the applicant for clarifications when those questions occur. We have a lot of people here tonight. I am delighted to see this level of participation in this process. I want to welcome everybody that's joining us from Zoom. We have. A lot of comments that we receive by email, so. With that, I'll turn it over to Brandon Eunser.
The air will introduce.
Okay, so this is green leaf energy. And they're gonna present. Their application now, the application, just for point of record, has been modified since it was submitted in that. When it was submitted, the planning board noted that the setback requirement was not fifty feet, but seventy five feet. And they had revised. Their. Proposal to meet that seventy five foot setback from the boundary. Just for a point clarification, okay? The board is yours. All right, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Would you have a microphone if you need one?
All right, my name is Eric Weinstein.
There's a switch on it.
Yeah, I need that one. Oh, this one.
And you have to talk directly.
Turn your switch. There you go.
We did it. Because they are looking at it.
Yeah.
Okay. Eric Weinstein, my name is New Leaf Energy. I'm here with my colleague Brandon Smith. My position in New Leaf is as a project developer. Brandon is our civil engineer. We're here tonight to present a solar project for a property at sixty six North Union Street. I'm going to be very short and sweet, just to make sure that I'm introducing myself here. Brandon's gonna help walk us through the project itself. We'll talk about. You know, where it's located, some of the merits of it in general. And then, yes, we're, you know, happy to answer any questions, concerns, take any. Just any feedback on on the design here. So definitely want to have, you know, an interactive conversation. I'll ask the brand, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Brandon Smith. I'm the civil engineer on this project, so. Just gonna kind of go over the the plan here, and I apologize if it might be difficult to see for those in the back, but I'll. Just go over the kind of oriented self, and then I'll I'll walk through the different components of what we're proposing here, so. The property here, again, as noted, sixty six North Union. The red outline here is the proposed facility fence. The blue rows are obviously the the solar modules. So starting from, this is here, this is North Union Street, so we're located east of North Union Street. So starting from the entrance. So the entrance that we're proposing to use, the existing kind of curb cut of the driveway there. I will then use a build a new driveway. Go for a wide gravel access road to access. The project. Along that access road, there'll be interconnection equipment mounted on poles. We pushed those. They're approximately a few couple under key. East of the road, so we push those as far as we can from the road there. Beyond those that interconnection equipment, we'll feel enter the site proper. Again, it's ring by a an agricultural fence. You may have seen on this whole project. Chain link fence, we use an agricultural type fence, best with the character of the neighborhood. The actual solar modules. Will be encompassing about twenty three acres solid fenced area. The module itself could be mounted on a galmy steel racking. They use an aquer foundation, so if there's no excavation, no concrete puddings, nothing like that, no earthwork required. They just basically screw it around there, get the racking mounts on top of those puddings. And then the modules mount on that racking. Ground tub cover underneath those modules, so we minimize grading to the extent possible, so no. No earthwork or anything required to install the modules in the in the array. So we'll keep that existing topsoil to the extent possible. We use a pollinator seed mix where possible as well, typically outside of the array area, because we do have a. I have a restriction to ensure we're not shading the modules, but we do use that pollinator seed mix. To, you know, basically. Support our pollinator species where we can. You'll see here centered in the array is our equipment pack, so that's where transformers immerse. They're they're mounted on concrete pads in that location, as well as the battery energy storage. Enclosures, so that those are all located in the central location there. Lastly, I'll touch on, we have done a full stormwater analysis on the project, so there's a. A total of four stormwater basins. Kind of located. Downhill of the capture any runoff, stormwater runoff. And ensure that any discharge discharges off the site match the existing condition peak discharged off the site. One thing I should have mentioned earlier, we have done a full wetland delineation on the site and reviewed the site for mapped. Priority or habitat. Species. There's no map or estimated habitat for endangered species on the site. There were a few wetlands. Delineated, you can see there's a large wetland complex to the east of the sites, we're. Staying out of, we're not impacting any wetlands. On the site, there's also the central. Wetland complex and a small one. To the southwest of the site. So I'll stop there and, you know, as the board said, we're happy to answer any questions later on in the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Why don't you start with you, Kathy, and just go right down the rows? I'll wrap it up.
I thought they were gonna go the other way. There's also a couple seats up front, because I know they're going to some people where.
People in the hallway that want to come in and sit down. Okay, they don't, they don't, they want to stay in the hallway.
Um, so I just wanted first question is more about, I'm calling about project. So I know that recently in July, you guys have had a downsizing of your workforce, and there's been some impact with the. Elimination of the federal tax credits. Around wind and solar, and I guess my first question is from a business perspective. How does that change? Timing for this project? Because I know in order to qualify for the tax credit. The project has to be not only started by a certain date, but up and running by a certain date. So I guess that would be kind of my first question from a timing perspective, does the. Tax credit situation impact the project overall in terms of what you're thinking?
Excellent.
You got it.
So that was a good question to start with.
Sorry.
That's that's a good one. It doesn't, it doesn't have an impact on this project. It is a good question, and yes, the, you know. Top structure, that level does impact. Our overall, you know, pipeline of projects, you know. We're still, we're still growing actually as a company quite a bit. The tax credits that are associated with federal policy. Have been a tailwind for for renewable energy developments without the present tax credit, you know. It might not be a pipeline that's growing as fast, but it's still growing. And then in terms of like specific time, timing. In terms of the tax for this project. This is actually, what happens often is that. The longest pull in the tent, so to speak, for development timeline of a project. Is getting the local utility to actually connect the project. In a expeditious way. And as probably a lot of you already know, there is a new transformer and circuits going into the Plainfield substation. Which is really a boon to to this this project in terms of timeline. I can tell you elsewhere in the state where we're developing projects, you know, there's a situation where we're waiting on. Whether it's EverSource or National Grid, it's actually built up the infrastructure needed to connect the project, so. Short version of that is it's it's not an impact on the structure.
And I know that from a Massachusetts perspective, there also are tax credit programs. Do you ever share those? Taxes with the towns that you're building in, primarily because if I look at this project. You always think like, what's in it for the town outside of the, hey, it's great to think about renewable energy. So do you ever share those tax credits like from the smart program with the town, because from a both a. We're not going to have direct access to power on the grid, so that the town isn't getting, you know, free power, for example, from what's being built. As as well as. Not, you know, from a tax base perspective, it's not a big boot. For the the tax base, so I just was curious kind of how. You see financial benefits to the town that you're impacted.
Yeah. That would be a good question. So there is, I think, kind of. If you don't mind, I zoom out a little bit and then kind of come back down, so at the. Start at macro level, like what are the, you know, what are the benefits of the project for, say, the electricity grid? And then we'll get down to the micro of, you know, the benefits of the town, so. At the highest level, we're kind of in a moment right now, and since you may. Be very acutely aware of this or or not, that matter of unprecedented load growth, electrical load growth. In the U S in general, that's mostly caused through the. Artificial intelligence, A I data centers. Those data centers. Have like the load profiles in small cities, so. We need more power just generally in to to power this this feature. So that's, you know, mostly coming from solar and wind, which are the the most economical. New and renewable electricity sources. So that's an important like piece of the puzzle here at macro level. Coming down to more local. This project, as well as any other solar project, does pay its fair share of taxes, so. There's a twenty year life of a project, so what we. Would be paying twenty years worth of taxes, and that'd be a conversation with the assessor on exactly the amount that's associated with that. But generally, the tax agreement that sets for the town actually, those every year for twenty years, there's going to be this amount associated with the project. And then lastly. Other like electricity benefits in general, so this project. As many are in the smart program or all in a smart program, but many are in Massachusetts. Is a community solar project, so for those that don't know what that means. It's basically, not everyone has a backyard that they can set a solar project in, or who've got they can set a solar project on. And community solar means that. Red, mostly residential off takers can basically sign up. You know, there there's subscribers to this project, so effectively. You would be, you know, in a contractual relationship to take some of the electricity produced by. This project, and you can sign up to do that, and it would, you know, there basically be a a small discount to your electricity bill to participate in that. I think the town actually may already have a similar arrangement. For community solar, maybe a different project. Elsewhere, but that that's something that's that's open to. President should just. But answer the question then.
Sure. Should I, do I may keep going or do you want to share? So so my next question is actually on the actual project. One of the comments in the proposal that neither of the wetlands are being developed. But if you look, and there will be no disturbance, but if you look at where. Both from an erosion perspective, obviously you're taking down a bunch of trees, so there. There is going to be some impact to the the wetland area just from a change of habitat. And if you also look at where the stormwater basins are, there, you know, the proximity to the wetlands. I just wanted to just kind of bring that up as a topic for you to address, because I think there is concern with. You know, how this will impact the landscape.
Yeah, definitely, and just to orient everyone. So the stormwater basins are located here. There's one here, here and here. So, yeah. As I mentioned, we're not directly impacting, we're not working in any of the wetland resources, we're just staying fifty feet away. From those wetland resources. With any impact of any time, I think you were referring to. You know, there there is inevitably with any construction or any activity. There is potential sediment transport downhill, which is obviously where the wetlands are typically downhill, so. I think what we've done, number one, we will have a SWIP in place. We should have an erosion sediment control plant to ensure that, to the extent possible, no sediment. Is transported into those into those wetland areas. Also, as I mentioned, we've done, you know, we do as much as we can to minimize that earth disturbance. To minimize the the impact that. That potentially could have downstream to those wetlands. And third, we we. Really careful making sure you're selecting. Which we see is that, right, so making sure that they're native pollinators, deep roots. To, you know, it's not going to be a forest, obviously, but it will be a. A different and differently valuable habitat. The last thing I will mention is that the stormwater system, which. Think you could go back ten years, you know, a lot of, there were a lot of solar projects put in. But you assumption that, oh, these are, it's gonna be a meadow, so we don't need to worry about stormwater. We're not taking that stance here. We're taking, we're looking at it very closely and make and kind of looking at the stormwater report we submitted. It's actually from the conservation commissions, took a very close look at what's going on. You know, the existing conditions, and then also took a realistic approach of like, what is really the the, you know. Close construction conditions, and what we can we do to the extent possible to mimic those existing conditions, so that's. That's why we have those four storm stormwater ponds. And, you know, the outlets or pipes, the outlet control control structures have been designed to. To mitigate or manage that water to, you know, mimic the existing conditions as possible.
Now, I have one more question, and I'm not that, so so I hope not to get to the. While this project's already done and it's already built, my questions are on decommission. So of the three hundred and eighteen projects that your company has done. One, have you decommissioned anything yet, so to say, hey, we've got experience with decommissioning versus theoretically, we think this is what decommissioning would be? So the second piece would be. In in addition to the decommissioning, if you think about. Financially, if you were a long or viable business, would it need to be decommissioned? In addition to removing all of the, you know, hard structures. What do you do in terms of reforesting this property that has been clear cut?
Keep my trade off on answering this question for you. Brandon has some experience there. Can I ask the first part of the question? These projects are generally a twenty year project, so we've been developing for over twenty years now. Our company's origins were actually really in. Residential and then commercial scale and larger scale, a bit of both. So I actually don't give a decommissioned project quite yet. We're pretty far into the lifetime of existing projects. But that said. Every project that we work on now, specifically in Massachusetts, there is decommissioning bond associated. With the project, right, that's usually a requirement of landlord. And that is expressly there to make sure, you know, again, we've been around for over twenty years, we've been doing this a long time, we've been very successful. We've developed more megawatts in Massachusetts than. Anybody else. We're headquartered in Massachusetts, so we are a national company with. Opposites as you Illinois. Markets in the Atlantic, on the west coast as well. But the point being, you know, things happen, so that's why a decommissioning bond exists. So I'm pretty, we are very much prepared. Could you?
It's decommission. What is the site left? And, you know, is it just a bunch of, you know.
Clearway.
What, yeah.
Yeah, so typically we remove everything above ground or to a depth of a few feet. Sometimes it'll be conduit or something that's lower, that's abandoned in place, but concrete paths are removed. The roads typically removed unless the landowner, you know, wants to continue using it. But everything else is removed. As far as reseeding or revegetating, typically we don't do that, because after that time period. It's actually, I mean, we have some quotas, like a share of like. It gets really well established as far as, it's not, again, a forest, but it's a really valuable habitat in its own right. So typically we don't, you know, go go somewhere and treat.
I'll pass them.
Okay. I I'm just gonna follow up quickly on that last question, although I have my own. What do you mean valuable habitat for for whom or what?
So, yeah, so basically. Well, one, the pollinator seed mix that we use, so we value pollinator habitat. And as everyone knows, it's mostly either farm fields or forests in in this area, so. Kind of having an area of emergent or, you know, beginning to emerge forest land with active pollinator.
So do you put that down at the beginning or?
Yeah.
You put that down after you decommissioned?
No, that's at at the beginning, but by the end.
Plant vegetation around the project. That is pollinator friendly from the outset.
Yes.
Okay.
And then anything, any during decommissioning, anything that is disturbed, say, the paths and the road are removed, also that's. There, that will be reseeded and we reseeds. You know, spec to whatever seed mix you commission or.
But you don't replant trees.
Correct.
Now. I may be ill informed, I will really admit I'm not an expert on this, but. I have always read that mature trees are a more effective. Carbon sequestration. Source than any amount of solar is going to replace or is going to, you know, mitigate. And I'm wondering. Exactly how many acres of trees are going to be cut? And have you ever analyzed that trade off between? Greenhouse gas savings by using solar versus carbon sequestration lost by clear cutting trees?
Yep, great question. To answer the first question, it's about thirty acres of tree clearing, so as I mentioned, about twenty three acres in the fence, but about thirty acres to, you know, outside of fences. As far as the carbon sequestration question, yes, we've actually looked into that, we've actually hired a consultant who does that. Type of thing, applied economics clinic. They look at the numbers, pulled, you know, a lot of different data sets together. What they found is that actually P V projects outproduce, if you will. A mature forest by. Tenfold. We actually did the the calculation or high level calculation here, and over the twenty years. This project will actually sequester about a hundred sixteen thousand tons of. Carbon dioxide, and that's that's accounting for the loss. That, you know, cutting trees. Cases, so I think it was in the order of five, almost like five thousand tons or so, and we have the. Numbers here.
It's not gonna mean it, you know, maybe some people, some else, so you should go ahead with that. What we had anything to do with?
Yeah. Yes. The vice states, it it well performs as existing.
Okay. My next question has to do with wildlife, and have you done an analysis of the wildlife corridors that would be disrupted by clear cutting that much forest? And what will happen to those pathways or those animals? I mean, will that disrupt? I mean. I have a small property and I have animals walking through my property all the time. It's lovely. And I don't think they're gonna walk through a solar, well, they can't through the. Stick in. So how does that affect the wildlife populations?
So we haven't done a specific analysis on on that migration or travel, but I will say. That what we do as part of our standards is ensure there's a wildlife gap on the fence. Typically, six inches, so obviously a deer, for example, is able to use that, but most. Smaller animals will be able to really pass through, sometimes we have sites, this site. We have checked to to ensure the mapping natural heritage program, there's nothing mapped here, so we have other sites that. Are influenced approximately to, you know. Certain species of turtles. And so for the same, like that, those species would be able to travel freely through the through the array. So it would be the.
I try most often see a bear and turkeys, wild turkeys. I don't think wild turkeys could get under a few inches of fencing either.
Yeah, yeah, so for those larger animals, we haven't done analysis there, I think. We're, you know, the location of the site is not necessarily blocking any, you know, there's still forested areas around it. But we can look into that further as well.
And then I guess my other question goes back to. I'm sorry, Kathy, Kathy's question about taxes, because I'm not sure I really understood that. It sounds like you were saying that the company negotiates a tax rate for the project, or. You know, that the benefit to us is we know what the tax rate will be in twenty years, well. I didn't know that anyway, don't we?
So just to clarify, maybe the word I was using there. The project will owe. I think it will owe its fair share of taxes, that's associated with whatever the mill rates that, you know, that the town assesses, so it would be a conversation with the assessor to understand the actual. Next obligation. Frequently, and I'm saying it's here, frequently what we. Do that's beneficial to both us as a project, but also to the town for certainty is what's negotiated as a pilot agreement. And the actual acronym is.
Of taxes.
Right. Because it's not, instead of taxes, it's just a.
Change taxes.
You know, it's an agreement that basically says. We've calculated the estimated taxes, but we're gonna actually write down a contract that says you owe this every year. Normally, the project notes from a financing standpoint, we can have certainty over, okay, we know. How many dollars we are gonna owe to the town every year, and also from a budget standpoint for the town, you know exactly how many dollars are coming in. As associated.
Our taxes change every year.
That's the point, the the power statement, to actually make sure that it's a known, a known quality.
So what if we agreed to something that then turns out to be less than taxes go up in some subsequent year? If it's over twenty years, we don't really have a good projection for figuring out. How much taxes are going to be increased by year nineteen or seventeen?
It's it's something that would have to, you need a conversation with assessors to try to forecast that appropriately, but obviously, you know, there's. Without that, there's uncertainty, with that, there's there's some level, there is certainty, but, you know, it's.
Yeah, I would encourage you to include the finance committee in that conversation.
I'm sorry.
I would encourage you to include the finance committee in that conversation with the assessor.
Understood.
Because the finance committee is the one that does the budgeting, and they are very concerned about being able to forecast. The taxes or two, they're looking at different ways to change the tax. A single tax for all land, but we could have a two tiered system. And there are implications there, but. You want, politically, you want that in your fantasy.
Happy to include them and, yes, something that we work on with the municipality.
Okay, I think those were my questions for the moment.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to something you've already covered, you're talking about the storm, you said you had four, I counted five. Collection points, but the main thing is we don't really have a site plan enough information to. Understand the whole thing, it's. The grading that's shown on the plan is just all the existing rating, with the exception of low grading around the five different pools. I think we need just more more information to make us satisfied that it's adequate and will work.
Definitely, and I. The stormwater report wasn't kind of a part of the planning board submission checklist, so we didn't include that, but we actually have just recently. The stormwater report wasn't kind of a part of the uh planning board submission checklist, so we didn't include that, but we actually have just recently. Submitted the conservation year mission, so we have a full stormwater report in there and we're happy to provide it to the board as well, I think that will provide. More of the information that you're looking for and we can also, you know, flesh out the plans. A bit more to to make that. Plan clearer. To to uh touch on your four verse five basins, as we're doing further in, you know, calculations into the stormwater, we originally thought we'd need five, but we actually. Were able to make it to four, so it's twice the product, so we'll make sure that's updated.
Okay, you answered it fine. Next question was sent to you, talk with the conservation mission yet?
Yeah, just submitted. Yes, yeah, we we submitted uh that yesterday, so the the chair, we need that. Should receive that yesterday, I thought, so we will be hopefully in front of the commission on the. Yeah, we did also have a preliminary conversation. Meeting on uh uh August twentieth, information commission, so you can use it up.
Cool, okay. The usable site seems to be constricted by wetlands, pretty much is is the main thing. Uh, when you originally submitted, you submitted with a fifty foot setback and because you're industrial, the core is seventy five et cetera. Did you just lose panels or did you figure out any way to make up any other panels lost and that extra twenty five feet?
Yes, we we just lost paint, we we uh didn't. We don't have space to relocate them, so we just uh minimize or reduce the size as much.
Logging construction traffic creates a lot of additional wear and tear of our roads and we've seen a lot of this in past projects. Our particular concern would be the edge of North Union where you are in the site, you know, these heavy trucks with logs and all that construction I put that you line. Are you willing to provide a bond or how how? How can you give, make us comfortable that the roads will be repaired in whatever damage is done?
Yeah, definitely, I think a bond is is common for during instructions, so we're happy to to have that. We also, um, you know, have an. Instruction exit, entrance exit, consisting of large rocks, make sure that dirt, grease knock off the tiles of any construction vehicles. Um, we can also make sure we're, uh, you know, whether this be a condition or that, we make sure we use that the edge of the road.
I think that he's sorry, I I happen to also be on this slide board, so I leave a little bit of a broader perspective and I know that we've encountered this in other areas of town. And the broader concern is not just the entrance and exit. But the wear and tear that happens on the roads getting to and from, because a lot of our roads are not built. To be handling heavy logging trucks. On a consistent basis over time and we have a number of roads that are in desperate need of. Basically rebuilding from the foundation up because it has been so eroded over time and. We have so little resources to rebuild the roads and we're working on it. But we have, um, would you be willing to entertain? A possible agreement? That we would assess the roads before you start your project? And we assess them when the project is complete? And any damage that was caused during that period of time, the company would cover, because the town doesn't have the resources.
Clearly concerned there, um, I think we we wanna consider like, you know, what the what kind of mechanism there to be there, but certainly so that we can have a conversation with it.
Yeah, I mean, and we we just went through this whole process with um some logging that was being done down on Zerba Road this past summer and and. We had to route their trucks in a certain direction and we also said that, you know, if we have to go ahead and repair that road when you're done. You've got to pay us for that repair.
Yeah.
Because we don't have a budget.
Yeah, I think I think we can talk about it a little bit further.
Okay.
But I think. Probably the first step to dispute and go through what our qualifications are, of course, after the first place.
Mm-hmm.
In that there was a material.
Well, if you're gonna be removing thirty acres of trees.
No, not not.
So what? Yeah, okay. We definitely get our highway boss in on that conversation.
Your site clearing plan extends into a three hundred foot easement of Western Electric and into the property of Donna M. Bryant E. and Aaron Clark. You secured rights to do that.
Yes, we have. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to try, I understood that correctly. Your your question was.
Your 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 site clearing plan.
Yes.
Shows you clearing into a three hundred foot easement of Western Electric.
Yeah.
And onto the property of Donna M. Bryant E. and Aaron Clark.
Yes, we have a conceptual ladder and we're working with utility consent for the plumber.
We need something. We probably something to, I need that documented.
We can definitely provide that, I did. If it wasn't already part of the application, it might be. I thought we. It might maybe like, it might not have gotten in there, so we can definitely provide that.
Related to that, as long as you're on that thought, I may. It also shows removing some stone walls and I don't know why those walls are being removed and given the fact that they're artifacts content. Our purpose, I believe, would be to try to retain.
Yes, I actually, that um is again, as we were looking. You know, we. We're continuously, we're in a development phase, so we're continuously looking at the project. To minimize impacts where possible, and that's actually something that I also noticed. This couple of weeks that we'll be here last and those stone walls, there's no reason to take them out, so we should those. Um, they're best not in any, you know, active learning, anything like that, so those. I will make sure that is.
My final question is, will you be adding, removing or relocating soils greater than a hundred cubic yards in volume?
I didn't hear that question.
Will you be removing, relocating? Or? Or relocating soils greater than a hundred cubic yards in volume? Adding, will you be adding, removing or relocating? Because this brings us different cider conditions we have to look at, for instance.
I just to clarify, so we, I believe the answer is yes, because as part of the equipment pad area, there'll be excavation. Um, typically, right, the equipment pads are concrete pads, but you need to excavate and get any unsucable soil, right, frost susceptible soil. Out from underneath the pads and replace it with. Non-frost susceptible soil, so I think that will be more than a hundred two yards, all told. I do want to clarify, we are not proposing to export material, um, so any pot fill done on site is staying on site, but I think. You know, we will be moving more than that.
Well, I'm real cool, and one of the things with the required right for a paying uh. On a second, I don't know what for elevations instead of the two foot, you have like, you know, you have the additional requirements.
Open, uh, I we could definitely make that modification to the plan. Yeah, we'll we'll make sure, make that change along with providing more detailed grading that you requested here, so we can pull that and check this out.
Uh, can I, I I just just like kind of heard a comment from the crowd, so. From the trees, you're not planning to do any roots, you're you're just gonna do cut and leave.
No, we we will be required, we will need to take out the stumps in the fence. Yes, in the fenced area, we we will need to, we, as I mentioned, we are minimizing to the extent possible, so we've actually modified. Again, we made changes to the plan that was in front of the council to. Eliminate stump removal in those areas that we can um eliminate that, so within the fence and the equipment pad and the road. We will be removing some.
And I think that was a little bit different than than that was in the original.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, we we've made that modification and we'll make sure it's all.
My questions have pretty much been covered, but. I'm not sure that I have an adequate answer to your question about. Um, the impact of removing thirty plus acres of trees. And when you are describing, um, it was kind of a cost benefit analysis, I'd like to understand that a bit better in this, right? It could be part of your presentation that I think would serve you well. Because we know what the benefit of those trees are because we live here and we know that we. Are proud of the the tree cover of Western Massachusetts, which provides. Something for the whole state, so when I saw the thirty acres together. The impact is not just um. To the wetland. The light will change, that will impact everyone that is in the butter, it will impact all with the wild wildlife habitats around. And I don't hear. Enough addressing those changes other than, you know, uh. The minimal amount that you have to put in in the report, so um it's mainly the impact of. Thirty plus acres of tree removal to the. Around the habitat. And then I also feel I just wanna. I think the. It is very hopeful to think that our energy will be coming from renewable sources going forward. I mean, this town could be impacted by changes and and that, you know, fossil fuels will raise their head again, so. In in. In wanting to support renewable energy. This one side, but the way it impacts a small town with a great uh energy source or or kid our trees. Our lungs, as someone has said, the lungs of Massachusetts, uh Massachusetts. Um, so we need to understand a little bit, I would need to understand a little bit better. Um. The benefit to this town and this area. That that is more a comment than a question, but I I think it's something that you should provide for us going forward.
Can I piggyback on that with a question? Because I thought I understood you to say that this was not. The energy produced by this project would not be. Directly available to the town in Plainfield. That it is to benefit the state of Massachusetts for people who live. In more populated areas with closer zoning, who don't have backyards where they can put in a solar panel. So I guess. I come back to the earlier question about what's in it for the town? What's in it for the town? And we get this, we get this question when it goes to cannabis. Cannabis Control Commission doesn't allow us to can to ask for, you know, community impact deeds. And there's a whole lot of our land that's being consumed by industries and goals of the state. That we get no benefit of. And I think that you need to make a stronger case in that, on that whole question of cost and benefit. Did I understand what you were saying about this project first?
No, I I'm just to reiterate on the the uh. Community solar component of it, um, you're correct that the energy does go onto the grid and the grid is, you know. Electrons move about the grid, right, that's not a specific location, but. It is a community solar project and the community of Plainfield and others are able to. Sign up to be an occupier of that energy, so that. Let's see about like, you know, direct. Where where does electricity go, there's that piece, there's also the the tax piece, and then there's, of course, the at the higher level, there is also the. Um, the mandate of of more renewable energy in our energy mix as they. But just coming back to to the line, to come back to your question for a moment and um. It's a business, um, right, but the yes, there are trees that would have to be included for the safety of solar project and. There's a lot that goes into setting an appropriate solar project, um. It's I. I know you guys aren't sitting with me every day in my office, we're like poring over what projects could be viable, what projects could not be. But we we take a lot of effort to make sure that we're setting these where the the balance is is. Best for the benefit of of the people, grid, et cetera. Um, so like, for example, I'm sorry, I'm kind of spinning around a little bit here, um. This is an existing transmission corridor. Part uh, the Plainfield substation is uh written down here, I think it's a.
Yeah.
Sorry, I repeat the way, um, that's really important, um. To have electricity, electrical capacity to actually connect into the grid, it can't just be. Anywhere with wires, those wires are um. In dire need of upgrade all over the state, they're a hundred years old, we built out electricity system a century ago. Um, what's happening at the Plainfield Substation right now is actually those upgrades are, um, it's called Electric Sector Modernization Plan that is basically. Um, pushing for a larger transformer. Um, yes, there's there's other, it's all over the state where these upgrades are happening and being paid, so because it's known that now that we've this distributed. Electricity grid as opposed to just one giant fossil fuel. Either appliance uh somewhere, uh, it is just like a engineering requirement. Um, so to come back to this, like, why is this a good site? Um, yes, we do have to clear trees, but it is not in rare habitat, it is not in well protected zone, it's not in biomass zone. Um, the trees and vegetation will regrow, this is, this is a project that's on leased land. At the end of the life of the project, as you pointed out. The project is decommissioned and then whether, you know, we've vegetated or we'll use it in a different way, it is. So, uh, hopefully I answered some of your questions on the the, you know, setting criteria, so like even even to the initial aspect you had mentioned. Um, you know, this says vegetative screening matters also from public ways and waters. Um, on one side, we have an entire transmission corridor, that's that's about, you know, that's good, so.
Mm-hmm, can you just clarify a little bit more about the community solar project, because I I for many folks in town, it's either you have your own solar. Or you're an ever source customer, so it's like we have this great. Well of water there, but we don't have a spigot, so can you talk a little bit more about, you mentioned, oh, but it's a community. Project, what, how does the town turn on the spigot?
How are you defining community?
Well, no, not that piece of it, but just how in Plainfield would we access the power that is being generated in our vacuum? And ideally for a free or reduced price.
Yeah. I think that, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the town has an existing communities. A community solar program or at least a. We do. So. That must, I I don't know who's who's administrative or working.
Maybe I was gonna interrupt the the. Score call and follow comment is the chair of our energy.
Because I believe in all.
You can answer that question.
Yeah, so we, yeah, because they.
Thank you.
Yes, some time ago, we signed up uh a net metering subscription. Program, that's what it's called, and it was with a project, it was uh. Uh, happened to be his project in the Berkshire County, actually, ever source territory. And uh, since Phil said, associated through the Hampshire Power, which. Originally was run by the. Hampshire County Council of Governments and now it's just. Remnant of that Hampshire Power. And uh, so it basically uh means uh. Uh, by allocating some share of that uh. Of that facility of its capacity. To to our accounts, our our town accounts. Uh, we we wound up with like a fifteen percent. Savings. And that got implemented. Uh, it's sort of gone two ways, and that's a function of the utility, whether. Like you pay your normal bill. And uh. And then. Through the uh solar developer, you get fifteen percent. Of of uh credits that went on there, went to the uh the town's. You know, the town's accounts. Uh, so our.
Doesn't explain any, yeah.
So do you mean the 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 bills that go for the town buildings or?
Well, again, there's two ways that that could be. Uh, implemented and administered, and one would be the way it wound up with us is, you know, the the bills, yeah. Uh, processed just the way they were, the town pays the full amount. But then from the solar developer. Uh, the check comes. And it's amounted to fif- you know, fifteen percent of our. Of the ones that the accounts that were. Uh, participating.
Yeah, I think I can further talk about because.
Yeah, I think I can probably talk about because I take advantage of that, I didn't get in time when this first thing came around. So I'm with Netflix on a site in Amherst. For every hundred dollars of electricity that they provide to ever-source, I only pay eighty-five dollars, I say fifteen percent. So it's a significant savings on all my electric bills, so I generally end up they they, so they're so far ahead in the summertime that I pay no electric bills, maybe January and February. Only time I end up paying. Other than the eighty-five percent I pay, not next to anything.
So I think, Peter, this means we need to have a separate session, different meetings to talk about.
Yeah, exactly. But anyway, that's one of the benefits that that you will be able to access uh, this locally, if it's uh through various mechanisms, but it's not it's not part of the permit process for us to determine or delineate that, but that benefit will be invaluable to the town's people. And we can help provide the information to them.
Do you have any questions?
All right, well, I'm gonna go through my list. First, I just want to, for information purposes, tell people that we are, the our power line that runs through our town is part of what is uh, a national interest transmission corridor that was defined under the Biden administration because of its connection to the uh Northfield Mountain Project, which is another renewable resource. And all along this corridor, there is going to be a need for there to be greater capacity in transmission. And if we go with renewables, there's going to be a need for us to be able to store that energy to release it when it's needed and not necessarily expend it when it's created. So that's part of the scope of this project, and that includes the the battery storage. No one's really talked about that yet, but I wanna talk about that a little bit now. I noticed in the uh the information on the battery package that it provides for the uh potential for the fire suppression system to be connected to these, are you proposing a fire suppression system for this project?
Yes, it does, that is an optional uh amendment for that. It's, we're still deciding on that, just because of um if if that is specifically of that. If they've been you know, we're we're working with the manufacturer, looking into that, whether that should be
Uh, and I would also suggest you should consult with our fire chiefs on that. So one of one of my concerns is that this is a uh, a battery storage that is somewhat remote from the road. Not necessarily uh visually prominent, because you've done a good job of screening its location. But if we have a an incident and we have a volunteer fire department that takes a matter of time, not if, even though the the public safety complex is we're literally around the corner, it will be a matter of time before it can be can respond. So I would think that we would wanna see as a minimum some type of notification system that would alert if there's a problem. And some kind of mitigation that would happen on site so that we don't lose that half hour, forty-five minutes of time it's gonna take for our department to respond to an incident and end up with a problem that's that's out of control. So I would ask that you would consider that and work with our uh fire chief to come up with a solution for that.
Um, just to mention, we have talked with fire chiefs, we have started those conversations and as far as monitoring, I think that's definitely something we can implement, because these systems are monitored continuously twenty-four seven, so um, you know, that that remote monitoring is already part of it, and I think that notification piece can also be implemented.
And do you, sorry, and do you include the training for the, I think that's good to mention, the training piece for the volunteer fire department?
Yes, we have, one of the topics that we talked about with the fire chief that we would, you know, whether decondition or we work with the fire department to ensure that we host a training for his staff prior to operation of the facility, oftentimes we do a cat site, you know, during construction, towards the end of construction, so they kind of get a lay of the land. You know, we've also talked about ensuring there's Knox box on the gate that they have access and a few other items that they requested that were uh, and definitely is
That was my next question. Now, the next question I have is related to noise. Because you've given us a a an exhibit shows a a noise profile from the location of the of the battery storage area. Uh, but I believe it's based upon the uh, the noise levels of the transformer. And I don't see anywhere in the literature any information about the DV output of the cooling system from the battery packs. Uh, and I don't see anywhere the number of battery packs you're proposing to get an idea of the magnitude of number of units that might be uh, producing sound over a period of time. So I would be interested in more data of that.
We we can definitely provide more data on that.
I'd like to see a detailed layout of the battery storage area. Uh, if we're going to, I mean, a a battery fire is takes a different type of uh fire suppression than than just water. And there's a good potential of potential uh chemical contamination if there's a fire. And given its proximity to wetlands, um, I would wanna see some kind of containment system built in with respect to the slab or something that gives us some assurance that if there is a problem, it will not have an adverse impact that spreads beyond uh, the limits of the of of the uh machine rears.
Yeah, would you give a analysis of that and a recommendation of how uh we can address that?
I I spent today on the uh attending a webinar uh from a couple of of best uh manufacturing, best for people who don't know is battery energy storage systems. And these are the larger battery packs that you see on a more commercial basis that we are gonna have to have more of as we move forward. And one of the things is is sound. And I think that um there's a uh particular sensitivity to sound in a town like Plainfield where you can hear a dog bark from across uh four streets away in 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 the early hours of the morning. So uh, or the the first trucks as they head down the road. So I will want, uh, I would be comfortable, and I wanna deep dive into the sound issue to make sure that we are not uh producing a new sort of ambient sound level uh, that will have an impact on on the new We live here because of our peace and quiet. And it's a really important thing that we um are assured to maintain that, whether that means you uh bury it or put a berm around it or do some things to mitigate it at the source, which is the best place from what I from the research I've done, as opposed to the boundary of I think we want some sound profiling, some information on that, it's really important. And I think it's one of the more overriding issues uh with respect to our enterprise.
It's a good point, um, and yes, we can certainly provide some more information about noise. Uh, just general bound produce, qualitative, not quantitative, the analysis in front of you, of course, but um, I just drove by the the substation, actually, just to get like a sense and no, it's very quiet here. There is, um, there's a faint humming, so it's a transformer. Substation, if you're standing on top of the substation, I think there's like forty-five decibels of the road where I was, choosing my phone, this is not like, you know, um, it's too scientific. Um, but the location of the sound emission here would be deep in the property, like if I can say now, like, if it won't be, it won't be anything that is a disturbance, as you just mentioned. Um, we can provide some more information to back that up, so that should.
And I think part of it is how the or the units are actually oriented, just the sound side and and the back side, so that whole, so that's why I wanna see more detail on the plan, so that we can make sure that if we're correcting sound in a direction where over time, as it distance becomes less, then it's an area where that will allow to dissipate, will be more comfortable emphasis directed towards someone's backyard, let's say. What else do I have? Everyone else has asked questions that I had, the the common drive. I'm wondering if there needs to be a sign or some sort of posting uh where the drive approaches the uh, the solar field that says do not block as a reminder, so that we don't end up with a situation where we need to have access for a regular basis. And there's a vehicle in the way, and Rob, I think you probably can give us that pretty easily, but I just wanted to point that out, it just needs, we just I was wondering if it made more sense to have a separate access, so there wasn't conflict there, but I think that's a a matter of comfort with the landowner and 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 you guys, so I'm not gonna try to condition as as a response, but I just want us to be aware of it. So basically, from what I understand on the drainage, you are relying on sheet wash as a way to continue to have the water that comes off these panels, which will be basically a drip line, put a quote to a roof. Will there be some erosion measures at that drip line? And then how does that water dissipate and then sheet wash and work its way down to these retention bottles?
Um, yeah, good, good question. So I guess the the one thing I wanted to just highlight is that these, each of those, these racks, right, there are twelve to eighteen modules um, consisting of twelve to eighteen modules. The the modules themselves are actually spaced, you know, about a one-inch gap. So actually, the runoff is, it's not, you know, when you look at a rack, it's not actually gonna be like a roof necessarily, it's the water is allowed to pass through those, so you don't have kind of this the same drip edge effect that you would maybe expect if it was a full, you know, sheet of roof, so. So so there's not a significant drip, there is a bit of a drip edge, but it's kind of like almost four drip edges, if you will, running up the array, and then the main um kind of mitigation to that is is reseating, ensuring that vegetation takes and holds, so I mean, you know, during construction, you stipulate, you can sure that there's decompenctions, that's really the main thing, make sure that seed receives safe. Um, so that's really the main way to combat that.
And then you will have swales as the base of this area to direct them to the the various
Yeah, exactly. So each of the stormwater basins, depending on, again, that calculation to ensure we're kind of mimicking these distinct flows, uh, they'll have swales capturing any runoff from the array and directing to the bases.
And what about the two uh culverts that we're showing underneath the road that don't actually go to a retention area?
That is for, so that uh, there's a couple culverts here, that's more for drainage during heavy storms, there's the the geography of the site. Um, a a bit of it is a kind of a low area that would drain towards those culverts. Um, that is one area that's not being captured by a basin. Uh, the reason being, again, that calibration, there's a certain amount of the array that we want to allow to flow towards the wetland areas unimpeded, so that we are, you know, we don't wanna starve the wetlands, we don't wanna discharge too much, but we don't also want to starve them, so that's
Well, and so that was my question about you charging the existing wetlands, so that can the retention basins, will there be a mechanism to get some of that water discharged back to those?
In, so in the the basin that is adjacent to the equipment has, yes, that that's where gonna be ensuring infiltration happens there to to meet our recharge um, requirements. The other ones, they likely will be, but they're gonna be modeled, they're designed as just a dry detention basin.
And are you using the hundred-year storm or three-hundred-year storm for your drainage?
A one-hundred-year storm. We are using the Atlas numbers, if you're familiar, they they're not the old TP forty, if anyone's familiar. They're old numbers that were that were produced back in the sixties, the what these storms are, that have historically just been kind of like the go-to numbers that that engineers use for stormwater analysis, but with climate change, those numbers are actually kind of low, especially to the hundred years, so we've used this this new newly published data uh, which has a higher hundred-year storm.
We we had a storm uh within the last year uh, that produced several inches of rain in a very short period of time. It caused extreme erosion issues of our existing infrastructure for drainage. And I just can see that um we should probably look at the implications of if you were to consider the three-hundred-year level, just because of work on pits. And I don't know if that would be a larger basin. But uh, we also have uh something I'll read into the record about a an installation that caused severe washout and pollution, where there was a a a filing in the uh cell of the state, so drainage is is a is a key concern. It's better for us to be overdesigned and underdesigned, and I don't think we have modeling that is going to accurately inject uh what kind of climate we're gonna have in the next couple of years, so that's why I would, as a as a precaution, wanna see what the implications would be if we were to uh, up the end, it was fired at a higher level of performance.
Yeah, we're happy to look at the three hundred, I can I can run that and go from there as far as, you know, how the existing system would handle that and what modifications. Definitely if there's feasible modifications that could handle that, um we were happy to to do that analysis and then determine if it's feasible, so we can look at that.
So I I would appreciate some analysis on there. And I guess finally, um, both of these wetlands, so so Plainfield's somewhat unique, we are top of the world. And uh, all, everything from Plainfield sheds somewhere else. We don't have much water coming in from others uh townships or because we're the highest elevation. And because of that, the two wetlands that are on this property are the beginnings of the watershed for the Westfielder. Uh, so it's really important that we protect those wetlands from any potential contamination, uh, because it's just gonna go downstream from there, so that's one reason why I'm particularly sensitive about the battery storage at this location. If there's a better location within the property, it provides more offer from the uh potentials impact on the wetland, but I just want you to be aware that it's a critical resource that we're dealing with, even though it seems like it's a small wetland. Uh, it is the start of a a very large system. And uh, we need to be sensitive to that. So that's why I brought up in particular uh issues with respect to fire suppression and and fire control, uh, just to make sure that we don't have uh any potential adverse impact in there. And I just wanna remind everyone, uh, before I start reading some of these letters, that this is a use that's allowed by special permit in town. Our responsibility of the planning board is to ensure that the applicant responds to this application in a way that's sensitive and consistent with the town. And so, um, for example, on the issue of the tree cutting, everyone is shocked by the fact that we're gonna lose thirty acres of trees, but the applicant could cut down those trees on his own without doing anything if he wanted to. And the fact that we have some ability to reclaim that resource with respect to pollinators and stuff may mitigate some of the issues, so I know this is sort of sensitive point and issue and it's alarming, but also the hazard is right next to the substation and it is in proximity as an ideal location for a potential solar field with respect to any location in town. And any other location in town, it would be a much harder ask to get to work. So in some ways, uh, this application is pretty sensitive to the need for us to provide renewable resources, and our responsibility is to make sure that it happens in a way that is consistent and in harmony with the characters. And that's that's our goal, so it's just a reminder from respect to our our position here. So with that said, I think we're 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 an hour in. I I have a lot of things to read, but I think what I would rather do instead is open it up to questions, because I know you've heard a lot of information. All of the information that we see so far, uh, I I'll read uh who received the information from and the topic, just so you have a flavor, it will be entered into the record and I can make sure that they are available for anyone that wants to read them in particular. And I'll sort of read them in order that we receive it if I can do that. So I received an email from Sasha Johnson, who was a resident of Conway. And she lives on Main Poland Road in Conway, where there was a solar installation that was installed that caused some fluctuations in power as the system was brought online, because the car infrastructure wasn't adequate to support the solar array sending its power onto the grid, so there were fluctuating power and and ultimately Next Am and Eversource just shut that down because it was not a viable solution. So I think that speaks to it. That's a very specific issue relative to more of the infrastructure around the solar field than the solar field itself. But she also wanted to remind us about an Audubon, Mass Audubon policy paper, and she quoted a site for Mass Audubon that talked about Mass Audubon's position that it's better not to disrupt critical forestation or wildlife habitat for the sake of 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 a solar array, but I would also say that they are not saying we can't do that, it should be done in areas of high sensitivity. And I think that this site does not qualify as a high sensitive site in that regard, there are no protected species, there are no there are two wetland areas, and I think we can adequately follow these as sure that those areas are not adversely impacted. I've got a letter from or an email, a document outlining his concerns with respect to the thermal runaway and fluid leaks and potential issues with respect to the battery storage. And wanting us to ensure that we had a proper installation. And I know that Ed's here tonight, he probably has additional questions related to that, let's see what else I have here, so I hope this is the email. I have an email from Karen Marshall, one of our select board members, also citing this thirty acre Conway farm situation and also the Williamsburg solar farm that polluted wetlands where there was a one million dollar settlement in the developer. And the state over mitigation due to excess damage due to inappropriate solar runoff. And she included a note from the planning board. It was a notice that the residents of North Poland Road, Main Poland Road, had written to their Conway Select Board about the the lack of proper electrical analysis with respect to that installation. So and we see the letter from from the Tunia Patch, which is one of the butter's trustees, that is in favor of this project, saying that a budding property, that Tree Parsons Avenue is owned by the Tunia Patch supplemental means trust, the trust favors approval of this application. Further, the trust supports the growth of solar power as it reduces the demand for certain fossil fuels. They're requesting a ten foot setback, but we have a seventy five setback, so. And then I have a a letter from one of the butter's page suruly, which is quite detailed, very articulated with citations. That I would like to read, but I would like to open up to questions and I might close the meeting with the reading of this particular letter, because it's about four and a half pages long. But it is, it's well written. It's comprehensive and I'd be happy to share that with you, just so you have it. All right, with that said, I will entertain anyone who wants, wishes to speak, please identify yourself where where you live. And then get direct comments to the board. We will ask, if the comments are just comments, we will record them. If they are actual questions, we can ask the applicants to respond. Thanks. Who would like to go first? How do we start to work our way through?
I'm Nancy Benson, I'm under butter. And I want to know, I don't know, I'm thinking about this all around population. I want to know if the solar panels have to be connected to Eversource in some sort of way, a cable or some underground facility that connects the
You have to hold that mic right in front of your mouth.
Do they connect? You have to connect it to Eversource itself. And how would you do that? You have to dig a trench from this property all the way down?
This is Benson?
Yes.
Benson. Benson. Yes, the project needs to connect to the Eversource distribution lines that run along the street front of of North Union Street. So there is a series of equipments that has to, is to take that electricity and bring it to or right from the solar project to the street front electricity, those are done, it's done a portion of that is done underground and a portion of it is via equipment on telephone calls.
Is that done by North Street, North Street itself, not in anybody's back property?
Correct, so North Union Street right here, there's a pole right there.
Yeah.
And the electricity would be brought to another pole down here, a series of poles that would be deeper into the landlord's property and then underground back to the equipment pad area of the property.
Can you explain that now? Where is the house on that?
Right here.
So everything's in the back? And down the side, it goes down to the next property on the right?
This is the proper, well, actually, this is, this is possibly lying here. And then this is the transmission corridor.
So that would go to the next property, and would it be visible? Is it going to be very visible from North Union Street? Are you going to see it?
This is several hundred feet, more than several hundred feet back. And this is fully vegetated as well.
Okay, all right, that's good. Can you tell me, is there any way medical, people with medical people with medical problems, where they have any interference on anything that in the solar panel filtration?
No.
It wouldn't affect their heart or anything?
No.
Okay. So that will be taken care of, the cables taken care, I think you've answered that question, that's really nice.
Hi, my name is Paige Sealy, I'm on eighty two North Union Street, I am that rectangle, white rectangle to the left. Can the clear cutting map seems to be proposing deforestation right up to the property line. Can you tell me, can you clarify that? Is is that correct, what I'm seeing?
You may be looking at the original civil, we have modified it to be further set back from the property, so the current proposal does maintain a fifty foot vegetated buffer from the property into the system, in addition to whatever else is on your side.
Okay. And can you tell me, will generators be used on this project at any any time during the construction phase or once the once the farm is operational?
I can't say for certain that it will, they will not. There are, there sometimes are during construction requirements for generators, I can't say during normal operation, there will not be any generators, so during normal operation, when the project is connected to the grid, the only noise source would be air conditioning fans from the equipment that we assessed from the battery equipment.
Would you have a sense of how long the construction process could be and are these generators running at night?
So the construction timeline, these projects projects take six to eight months, but a good chunk of that time is like commissioning and final electrical work, maybe three months or so at the end, it's very quiet and there's a handful handful of people there making final electrical connections. The active construction is more like four months or so when there's actual, you know, the tree clearing, racking installation, equipment landing, that sort of thing, so.
She asked about the
Night, again, the there, I can't say for sure that during construction, it may not be needed for that, I think it would be extremely rare that there would be a need for a generator.
Okay.
The only reason I hesitate to say absolutely not is that if there is any delay, these batteries do need to be maintained at a consistent temperature, and if there's a delay for some reason, they should have to be hooked up to so they're all in the grid, there is theoretically a scenario where they would use a generator to ensure that their you know, their system, heating and cooling system keeps them in that.
Understood, okay. I also had a question about the layouts. The, I guess the I think it's identified as electrical equipment, this this little grid towards, yes, they're huge. Is there a reason why it is positioned there? The back half of my property, property is a horseback riding lane and a pasture. And right now I am within the sound range in in that map, can this be pushed down into this lower lower grid farther farther along this road, so it's farther away from from houses and maybe noise is less of an issue?
Well, the reason that it is located in the location is is to be as centrally located as possible. Or noise considerations, mind other things. The other consideration that may make it difficult to slide it to the east is topography. This is, it kind of is steep in this area, it gets steeper, generally slopes to the south southeast. And we do try to minimize earth disturbance with creating and all that, we can, we can look into it, potentially sliding it over, but again, there are some constraints that may make it difficult. I do want to mention about the sound. I think the the decibel level, as you put in context, right, forty five decibels, I believe is one of the contour rings that are on that map, that's an extremely low level, right, akin to a dishwasher running in the other room. So and there's a few other things that would make that extremely difficult to hear, which is typically, you know, ambient noise during the summer, there's insects, so during winter, you know, that's typically like the most quietest time that there could potentially be observed. The other thing I wanted to mention is that Massachusetts has probably the most protective noise guidance, state noise guidance, you may intend to to meet that. So the state kind of takes care of, ensures that any noise level across property ground boundaries is imperceptible in all, but the most extreme cases, and again, we intend to.
Okay. Given my proximity to this project, I'm I'm extremely concerned about fire potential. Can you tell me how you plan to maintain both the road and the gates through the winter to provide emergency access? We get snowstorms of three feet in in a night. And that's happened several times since I've been been out here, who's responsible, how quickly will this be addressed after a storm? And can can equipment get out there? Are they dealing with frozen gates and things like that?
Sorry, I'm through the chair, we're just answering these questions, but you have
Oh, sorry.
Yes, so long term, the the system would be owned by an operator, a long term operator, who will typically contract out those services to a cloud company. As far as the specific requirements, there's not a set requirement, typically, the owner of the facility will have their own requirements if they want to make ensure that they have access to the facility, sometimes that's twenty four or forty dollars after a storm. You mentioned, I want to make sure I answer all of them.
Frozen gates, yeah.
That's typically not been an issue, I've heard that being an issue as far as frozen gates or anything, so we don't have a contingency on that. The gates are typically implacable, even in frozen conditions.
Okay, and that includes the gate to the the perimeter fence around this? I'm just trying to visualize what what this looks like, does someone have to come dig this out of after an ice storm?
Yeah, yeah, and one consideration that is sometimes is easy to forget is that the gates, we ensure that they open outward, so that you can clear snow, be able to open it. But yeah, typically, that's not the issue getting in with a subdued, set of frozen weather.
Okay, and and you mentioned the batteries are monitored, has anyone tested the cell? I'm assuming this this is by cell service, has anyone tested out there to make sure that the signal is strong enough to to for that to be reliable? I know that was an issue with Conway.
So the question is about like communications with the batteries.
There's a lot, Conway described batteries going off, alarms going off for six hours and then another three hour response time. Because they weren't getting the the cell call because the cell service was not. I'm curious if anyone's tested that.
Typically, these are wired in, but there's there's usually redundancies involved, I don't want to give you a wrong insight and you can research it for you and get back to you.
Thank you.
We do have in-house in town, a fiber optic network, so that, yeah, I wanted to direct fiber connection and also have a battery backup. So for it's continuing to use to have, that's that system is supported by a reverse generator through the power.
I just have a question on that long white. What is that? And on top there, that hits the road, that goes over the road, onto the left. Go up, go up.
No, no.
So this, it's just the color scheme of all the all of these that it's confusing, basically, the green represents existing forested wooded areas and the white is where open space law, so that's also the
Hi, I'm Sarah Houston, that's Central Street. Not too far from my nest, just a few properties away. I have a couple of questions for you. First is it seems like the property extends past the wetlands, is that something you are also leasing?
I'll get better at talking here.
That is the property you extend
Yes, that that area is there.
This is, this is not part of the project area, this is, this is a stream basically that's going in this direction, it's that's beyond the the concept of the design here.
But is it something that's being leased by you guys eventually to build in the future or do anything else with?
No.
Yeah, okay, so it will stay forested?
Correct.
Okay. Second question, you had mentioned that there were going to be retention homes. How do you view the water levels in those retention homes? Are they going to be dry mostly here, wet mostly here? And if wet mostly here, what kind of mosquito mitigation do you have planned? Especially because we have had recently West Nile and Triple E in the area. And that would be a big concern, especially being so close to wetlands, we wouldn't want pesticide spraying or something like that, if it's something natural like mosquito fish. Or what are the plans for that?
Very good question. These are designed as dry detention basins, so they will not have standing water. And actually, because of that reason, Massachusetts requires us to model ensure that it will be drawn down within seventy two hours, so after a storm, there will be no standing water within seventy two hours and we've made sure that that is the case.
And that's a drawdown, where is that, what are they going, to the wetlands?
It'll be discharged typically towards, again, this water flows downhill, that's where the wetlands typically are, so yes, typically towards the wetland areas. We are maintaining a buffer at minimum fifty feet of undiserved land between anything that we are Anything that we are posing tree clearing or stormwater basins, um, so there will be a, a minimum fifty foot. Overland flow discharge from those basins before it actively hits the wetland resource areas, but generally speaking, because we are. You know, kind of constrained with wetlands around in the general direction of what.
That discharge will be caused by acid pumping, like, um, is, and is there going to be noise created by that?
Um, no, it'll be passive gravity bed, so. Stormwater runoff from the array, gravity flow to the. Stormwater basin or the interception trenches or swales that will direct water to the basin, and then gravity throw, flowed. Through a pipe to the discharge of the basin.
Sorry, I have a question, um. When you look up on Central, and it sounds like, uh. Which is on the one sixteen, what kind of continuous maintenance are we going to be having, charged by constantly to the front?
Yeah, once the system is fully operational, maintenance is pretty limited, it's, it is unmanned, so there's no one. There on a daily basis, a typical day, no one's visiting site or anything like that, and. O and M visits are typically. Four to six times per year, so very infrequently, just a mow is one thing, vegetation maintenance, then also obviously. Electrical inspection, central replacements, if there's anything that needs.
Jack Nelson, put this screen. And, uh, I just want to ask about the batteries and their cooling, I understand they're liquid cooled, like water cooled. Um. I'm just wondering, uh, are they cooled by convection or by fans? I assume it's fans, so you're talking about noise levels.
Correct, yeah, that, there's an exhaust fan or a cooling chiller fan, uh. Yes, there is the fan, um, cooling fan. Blow air over the, the cooling, blow it down, much like the cooling system in a vehicle. Um, and that is typically, right, that exhaust fan that's blowing air over, over the chiller is typically the source of the noise.
And, um. Where's the, the power that runs these batteries, these fans, does it come from the batteries or does it come from elsewhere? And if there's a power failure, what?
Um, yeah, there's, there's generally auxiliary power, uh, that's provided to the equipment itself, so. There, that's, that's where the electricity is.
Where is the auxiliary power come from though?
The, I think there's actually, incorrect me by, by the stress, I think there's actually the auxiliary power coming to the streetcar. It's very firm.
Yeah. Why is power here, which happens. You have divisions for these kinds of emergencies.
Yeah, I don't know if I can, have you guys support you on, on that.
I think that's something I probably should, we can, we can talk about batteries, yeah, I suspect that.
There's a good answer here.
Yeah.
There's definitely a good answer here, so, so let's get back to you.
Uh, one more.
Yeah.
You know, as far as the rationalization for. Uh, panels versus forests. I was looking at some data from the US Forest Service. And it says that it's eleven years from sampling to mature for, uh, thirty-seven years from sampling to mature forest. And, um, when these things are decommissioned, there'll be no forest there, so just. You know, you've, you've come up with some figures, I haven't seen the data or the analysis to justify. You, you know, sparing with the carbon dioxide released from fossil fuels, but, um. That's a short-term solution, twenty years. And, uh, thirty-seven years is. More than a panel's last, so just be caught at this.
Hi, my name is Lawrence Youngs. I live across those feet from the proposed project on North Union Street. Along with my better half of already prepared. And, um, I, I'd like to make some comments, and I have a couple of questions as well. I mean, I'll be, I'm trying to be brief. Okay, thank the, the opportunity to be heard, and I was wondering if I might be able to submit a written statement, is there a deadline to submit a written statement? To the board?
If you have a statement, we'll accept it tonight.
Okay, very well. Um, and, and as much as I favor solar energy as an alternative to fossil fuels. And though I, I certainly recognize that a person should be generally able to do what they want with their, their properties. Uh, I, I, I must object to this project as currently proposed. Uh, for numerous reasons, uh, many of which have been mentioned, uh. First of all, uh, obviously the project is not residential nor agricultural. And it is, I would say it's out of character with the rest of the neighborhood. Due to this enormous industrial scale. Uh, it's my understanding that the structures. Uh, are to cover twenty-three acres with thirty acres of trees being cleared. And I feel like the loss of thirty acres would be a tremendous and long-lasting environmental blow in many ways. Uh. First of all, the loss of habitat, the local wildlife. Second, the value of the trees and their ability to purify the air, and cushion sound. Third, the loss of the ability of these trees to sequester carbon from the air. Uh, I've done some research and, uh. A single mature tree sequesters approximately forty-five pounds of carbon a year. Or one metric ton over, uh, forty-five years. Uh, thus the benefit of the solar energy produced, in this case, in combating climate change. Is probably more than offset by the purifying benefits of the, the trees lost. And I did hear a reference to, uh, uh, some studies that were referenced by, uh. Uh, Greenleaf Energy, I would point out that the solar panels decline in their efficiency over time. Uh, and of course they have to be removed, and there's a carbon footprint for both producing the solar panels. And removing them, disposing of them. Um. Uh, as well as, uh, it, it is possible that newer technologies may render. These panels obsolete, and perhaps five years, ten years, who knows? Uh, second of all, well, that's a long, fourth one, uh. They, they get covered in snow, um, during the winter, especially at this altitude. Uh, I had spoken with, uh, my realtor. Who pointed out that she, she had seen, uh, similar projects in Gill and Mongu. Uh, of course, these projects were done by Meadows, not, it didn't have to remove acres of trees. Uh, and, uh, they were far away from any other residences, well away from any houses, I don't know why. This particular location, uh, would be ideal. When there's, must be other locations that are. Clear of trees already, uh. And, uh, the, the chair had pointed out that, uh, wetlands in question here are very critical. And yet he says this is not a very sensitive area, or highly sensitive wooded area. That, that seems to be somewhat of a contradiction. Uh, and, uh. And on top of that. Um. The, the project would, I think, devalue surrounding properties. Uh, I'm right across the street, uh, Paige is right next door. And to, about her property so closely, I mean, I, I can't imagine it. It, it just seems a, a neighborly, right? To, uh, have a project that goes right to her, uh, property line, back because. Uh, I'm across the street, I'm not looking forward to it either, my realtor tells me it's not going to help the value of my real estate either. So, um. And I, uh, have to speak with Mr. Weinstein on the phone, um. I, I think I, I understood it would take, uh, nine months to complete the project and. It may be only four or six. But that's, uh, months of noise and heavy vehicle traffic, exhaust and wear here on the roads. Uh, and, you know, I feel like it's a substantial interference. With our, you know, quiet, peaceful use and enjoyment of our property. I'm sure with Paige, it's even more, uh. Um. And there are. I, I understand there are wetlands on the property and, uh, I would like to hear from the conservation committee about that. Uh, any potential impact to the wetlands, any a- animal, uh, both flora and fauna, uh, impacts. Um. So it's my feeling that, uh. This should be constructed on clear land away from any residences. And if the planning board is inclined to allow this kind of projects, they should be well away from any homes. Hey, I'm not sure how much land, uh, Mr. Pitco has, uh. I think it's seventy acres perhaps. Um, something like that, and I, I also have a question about, there was a letter from the Batumia Trust. Uh, and I, I don't know who the principals are. Uh, it's my recollection from looking over some D's that, uh, that was Bach from the Dominant Estate. Which is, uh, Mr. Pitco's main property, I don't know if that's true, uh. But, uh, so I think it, it might be related to Mr. Pitco, perhaps he could explain, uh, on that. So anyway, no. I, uh. For the, those reasons, uh. Including these, the funds for remediation and everything in the project, uh, I would strongly. In- implore the panel to, uh, not accept the proposal as, as proposed, thank you.
My name is Polly Ryan, I'm living in Windsor Avenue in Playfield. About the, um, pollinator plants that you're gonna, um. Seed, I'm wondering how. How far up are the panels off the ground? And how is, uh, these pollinator plant, how are they going to grow under the panel if it's them like?
So the panels, um, at, well, this. Has been referenced at this elevation to, are, are going to be above the ground, likely around three feet or so at the leading edge. Typically that's to account for snow, ensure that snow sheds off it, that also allows. You know, grass or pollinators to be planted adjacent to the array. Um, the pollinator mix that we typically use, we do try to keep it out of the array area specifically because of that reason, so it's more around the edges. Um, of the array, within the array, we typically have to use a, there, there are actually, um. Specific solar seed mixes that seed mix companies make now that, you know, key kind of. In- introduce different species, but then keep it below that three feet, so that's typically what we go with here, um. And could you move the second part of that question? Skip, we want to touch on something else.
Right?
Yeah, the height of the panels, they're three feet off the ground. And, but they slope.
Yes, yes, that's.
And so the high part is mainly what?
Eight to nine feet or so, at the, at the back edge, yeah.
But underneath all the panels, there will be no pollinator plants, it's just the climate. Where you're seeding.
Uh, yes, but what you mentioned about under the panels, um, and like, whether it be a. Pollinator mix or just a solar ray type mix, actually, if you look at other sites, there's. I don't know if anyone's familiar with the term of the trampoline effect, basically if you have a trampoline in your backyard, depends, sometimes that actually increases. The growth of grass because it prohibits drying out, it increases, kind of makes like a microclimate of more humid. Um, you know, allows the grass to be healthier, that's actually what we see in a lot of our sites, so. We're actually gonna, very often, actually, we have a harder time getting, uh. Seed to establish between the rows where it's getting kind of, the sun's beating down on it, so. Um, for that reason, there, there shouldn't be, you know, a, a lack of growth underneath the panels for our.
They say what also impact run.
Exactly, so it's, it's critical for us to have a good ground cover.
What else? Polly, do we have people online listening?
Uh, I'm Michael Medall, twenty-four South Union, which is down in, uh. Uh, just a few questions, um, for invasive species remediation on the site, what are you doing to ensure that the pollinators, the mix stays? Old, the kind of that invasive species still going into this metal?
Um, so we, we typically consult with, um, biologists to formulate a plan for that. Typically, we do not use her side or anything like that to treat invasive, unless there's any found onsite, there's a, you know, if it's identified, which we haven't. Necessarily identified any patches of invasives onsite yet, so we don't have a specific plan laid out for that and. But if it needed, we would engage a, a biologist to help us with that.
Uh, there's obviously a lot of instructions going to take place, um. In terms of immediate benefits to the community, how many of those jobs do you hire locally? For like the grading or any part of the construction, forestry, et cetera?
So that's, um, I mean, we, we. Typically, we, we do try to hire, we have, we have a set. I guess to back up, New Leaf is the developer, we will, we partner with long-term. Owners that will actually operate the, the facility, so, but we do have those partnerships with, uh, select. Few companies that typically own these after we've developed them, and again, they have partnerships with, you know, different. Whether it be tree clearing or earth moving contractors, but those are typically, it depends on what you mean by local, they're definitely, you know, Massachusetts-based. Uh, as far as what, we, we don't have, we have a project in Beckett, but, um, you know, I think we would look into. Local groups, uh, contractors, if they're available, yeah.
But there are a lot of, there's, got a lot of trees, a lot, a lot more guys.
That.
Yeah, there are, there are great, uh, lawyers down here as well as, um.
Excellent investigation.
Or at the row.
Yeah.
Um. The site obviously is going to be, uh, a lot suitable for. It's going to have effects on this surrounding neighborhood, and I'm wondering from the planning, uh, board's perspective, um. In terms of future plans for that neighborhood, had you? Done anything to sort of prioritize that area, which is in a central part of town for further residential development? And do you anticipate this impacting? That residential development in the future?
Yeah, currently, there's no, um, planning for concentrated residential development near the town, we don't have a bylaw that allows that. Uh, part of the, uh, comprehensive plan that we are developing as the town is looking at basically accomplish that. But there's nothing in place right now that would, uh. Have an impact by this project in that regard in terms of a site that's been identified as a potential. Location, uh, when we think about the village center. We think more about the central, so the main street here is down in Central Street than the true village center, so. Um, but, having said that, uh, North Union is one of the more densely residential areas in town as well, so. Um, and I would also point out, uh, just, we do have a, an installation on Union Street. That is behind, uh, the residential area, and we have not heard any. Uh, complaints or issues with that particular installation, and it is. Uh, about seventeen acres of, uh, solar panels, so, uh, it's not the only. One, it's not the first one in town, it's not the only one in town. Um, so, I think that's just point of information.
Just one more, and that's a comment. So I do think that, um. All the concern about tree cutting are totally valid, uh, however, um, Massachusetts is actually losing field habitat pretty quickly. And, uh, field habitat, space for pollinators, stuff like that, is a really underrepresented ecosystem in Massachusetts. I don't know how, I don't know how valuable this habitat is for those kinds of species, but it's just something that I've read.
I'm going to sit down. My name's Ed Spockman, I'm a. Farmer from, uh, Summit Street, Summit Farm, um. I'm a fourth generation farmer, I'm on land that my grandfather. I'm on land that my grandfather owned on Summit Street. And I just have a comment. I'm concerned about global climate change. And I noticed that when they were advertising their company, they have a solar array in the middle of agricultural land. I find that very short sighted and very irresponsible. And I hope their responsibility to this project is a lot better than their poor advertising. Also, another comment before I start asking questions. This project is not a forestry project where the trees that we cut. It's gonna be cut and cropped. What that means is all the stumps will be removed. So that thirty acres is gonna be pretty much bare and exposed soils for the length of the project. Now, if we wind up with big storms, we're gonna have problems on that site. My first question associated with that comment is, will this project be phased?
So to the extent that we, or the contractor performing the work will have to comply with the stormwater discharge permitting empty's permit and ensure that there's not greater than five acres exposed at any given time? Yes, we're not necessarily proposing to phase it in a complete, you know, complete one section and then complete the other. But it will be phasing as far as, you know, finishing the earthwork, ensuring that's stabilized before moving on to the next one.
It was mentioned previously that there's four detention basins. I thought I counted five, and I think Jared counted five as well. Those detention basins will act as sediment traps during construction. So there's gonna be a whole, there'll be two functions to those basins. And that has not been mentioned in the application at all. But that, we have to know those kind of things. I mean, before the planning board can make a good decision on any of this, they have to know what's gonna happen there. And as far as discharging water to a wetland from those basins, there's no swales, stable swales to bring that water to a wetland. That's not on plans at all. The plans for the detention basin, the details, have no emergency spillways. I've watched detention basins over top and completely erode away. So I assume that you're gonna get more detailed, details when you have your final application here. While we're on detention basins, they're all gonna be permanent structures. Will you produce any sediment traps that are not detention basins in the future?
I guess just one point to mention, right? Our plans submitted to the planning board are, and I don't wanna say conceptual, but they're for site use. So they're not construction level. Yes, we definitely will have all that information prior to construction. And we can add it if the board would like to see that level detail, which I think they've already indicated before. So we'll add that. As far as, I mean, that was a very good point about the sediment traps. That is typically kind of one of the standards that we do use, right? Especially the dry detention basins, where you don't have to worry about compaction. Infiltration basin, we do want protective bits to ensure it infiltrates. But we will be using those and we can add some more layering on the construction level processes or procedures to ensure that sediment doesn't flow offsite. As well as same thing with the, the emergency outlets. They will be designed, or they are designed, they will be added to the plans so that the board can see the detail.
If I may, Ed, before you go on, there is an operation and maintenance plan that discusses how these structures will be maintained during plant life.
I'm gonna see the maintain, but I didn't see any of these. I just made it. Will you be able to review the final plans, the construction plans, and give input on that before the board makes a decision?
Typically, the board's role is to approve the use. And the review of the construction with respect to issues like that are usually go to the Conservation Commission and the Building Commissioner. And if we have reasonable input from the applicant that they have planned in place that can be reviewed and verified, then we're satisfied with that as opposed to requiring full detail level.
So what you're saying basically is we won't have a look at the final plan?
Well, before construction starts, the plan needs to be approved by the. This is, this is the public review process that we're going through now.
These plans are not to really review. There's a lot of left out information. As a matter of fact, they were pretty sketchy. I've reviewed hundreds of these plans in the past. I've been a farmer, but I also had a consulting business, twenty-five years. And this is one of the things that we did in my consulting business. So I have probably at least thirty questions that were not answered on this particular set of plans that were issued to the planning board. I'm gonna get those questions answered tonight, but I'm not gonna see anything in writing.
If you submit your questions, we'll forward them to the app.
Okay, that'd be a good idea. Also, there was references to things like the trade-off associated with clearing forest and producing electricity. Somebody said, correct me if I'm wrong, at these, this particular project, sequesters carbon. Where is that? Is that in the plastic that those panels are made from?
The project itself doesn't sequester carbon, you know, building materials to cleaning this. It's the offset that is a result of the project. So yes, there is the loss of the carbon sequestration through the trees that are onsite. But there's also the offset produced by generating this, the clean electricity that's coming from the system. And that is, that is instead of fossil fuel generated electricity. So the offset comes from that between those.
Who mentioned that there's reports talking about the trade-off of carbon sequestration in relationship to forest and solar arrays? How do we get a copy of those reports that you referenced in your presentation?
We'd be happy to provide some of that information, that was what preference.
Before we leave this, before I leave this, I'm very concerned about this battery storage facility. I'm concerned about something called thermal runaway. Can you explain that to the audience, please?
Yeah, thermal runaway, basically, it would, it means fire for lack of, you know, to be direct. Basically, what these lithium ion batteries with, you know, in certain situations, they're comprised of cells, individual cells that are packaged into a module, which are packaged into a rack, which are packaged into an enclosure. That's what you see. Thermal runaway happens when something happens, whether it's short or something, it could within the cell generates heat when it gets to a certain level. It can propagate to other cells. There are a number of different levels of safety that these products go through in testing to ensure that that doesn't happen, right? That stop it at every chance to monitor twenty-four seven. So if anything is, any variable is outside of the desired range, it can be shut down remotely. You know, there, it's tested, UL ninety-five forty K testing, which basically they, you know, U of U's underwriter laboratory takes one of the modules purposely, puts it into thermal runaway and monitors it to ensure that it doesn't propagate, you know, uncontrollable. So there's, there's a lot of safety they've come a long way actually in the last ten years or so. So the product that we're proposing, the current product in twenty twenty-five is extremely safe.
Peter mentioned that there's a way of actually preventing fires from really spreading. This town, I don't know if you've ever, I mean, if you've driven around this town, but our biggest crop in this town is trees. Trees are an agricultural crop and it's our biggest. If that fire from that battery facility ever got away and all of those plastic panels burned, if it ever got to the edge and started this town on fire, we'd be in big trouble, everybody. Everybody in this town, because we are a town of forested lands. So I would be a strong opponent to take a hard look at what Peter suggested earlier about putting fires out. Now, one of the things they've been using to put these fires out is a foam. And many places that have used that foam have wound up with big problems from PFOS chemicals. PFOS chemicals are the forever chemicals that that foam contains. And I would be strongly opposed to using any kind of foam with any kind of PFOS chemicals associated with that. Now, I do, I'm gonna give up on these questions because a lot of them deal with battery storage facility. These facilities, in case the audience doesn't know, they do burn up. They not only burn up, but they explode up. All right, so we've gotta have real safety issues associated with. But I've heard so much in my eighty years of existence that this facility is fail-safe, this one's fail-safe, this nuclear power plant will never melt down. I am burned out on everything's gonna be fine. Because it's not always fine. And I live in a town that's forested and I do not want this town to burn up. So at any rate, I'll look forward to hearing your answers to my question. Thank you.
Yeah, Bruce Davidson, Summit Street, right down the street from it, as a matter of fact. In regards to this property being such an ideal property adjacent to a main electrical corridor, and what is your minimum maximum for future development in, for all of our interests? In terms of what land, like I got phone calls from your solicitors already. I'm gonna turn them down because I'm not in it for the profit, I'm in it for the town. I'm in it for the solace, I'm in it for the lifestyle. So I'm a little, I'd rather you be producing a nuclear power plant that I could like fight. This is very hard for me to like morally fight, it's clean energy. But let's get back to the point. So what is the minimum maximum from a major corridor that you guys look for in a property?
You'll be nice, truly, please help me if I'm trying to make sure I'm answering the right question here.
Want to sound repeated more simply?
We try to repeat a back table. Sounds like you're trying to understand when looking for a new property for a solar project, what's like a size of a property that would be something that would be interesting?
Distance from the hookup to the grid, that's my interest. Size, since you brought it up, I'll take a jump on it.
Oh, that's gonna be a hard question to answer, but it does one too, actually. I think the answers would be a little bit disappointing because it's, it depends. We wanna be as close as humanly possible to a substation. This is really like the most simplistic way to put it. That accounts for a lot of, a lot of variables. I'm not an electrical engineer, so I'm not gonna be giving the, you know, giving the details on that. But there's voltage issues when you're super far away from the substation. There's also, there can be multiple generators or loads on a circuit. So if you have a five mile circuit, there might be three solar projects and one lumberyard or something like that, right? And that all accounts for like how saturated the circuit is. So it kind of depends on, you know, what else is on a circuit to be viable as a project. So the best way to adjust for that is to be as close as possible to the substation. That goes for like upgrades to the electrical system as well. When transformers are needed, that's a very expensive upgraded electrical system. When circuits are upgraded, also very expensive, but that part depends a little bit along. But where are you on the circuit? Do you need, is the whole circuit need to be up to it or a small section? Next to the substation, there's no other option than be a small section. So I answered your question.
Yeah, pretty much. Is there any maximum distance where you wouldn't go past that limit?
There's not a specific number.
And how that size, since you brought it up?
Oh, it was, it was gonna be a hard one for me to answer. Also, it really depends on a lot. There's some limitations to the electrical standpoint, what can actually be put onto the grid on a small project. About that resource, the national grids requirements. There's also a program requirement on sizing, so it really, it really does depend.
Okay, there's people that have been waiting down here, so we're gonna go to that and then ready back.
Just before we do this, we're at nine, we're ten after nine, we've been going for two hours. I would like to suggest that we continue this hearing and reconvene. So I'll let two more people speak. And then we'll give the applicant a time to respond to these questions when they come back. And we'll reconvene and we'll set the hearing date once we hear these last two speakers.
Is it possible to be, my statement into record, my letter? I'm happy to read it.
I have it. We have it and we will introduce the record.
Okay, will other people hear it?
Yes, we will read those at the continuation, we will read all the statements. Go ahead, Tom.
I'm on a tangent.
Hold the mic in front of your mouth.
I'm on a tangent, I look at Twenty-Five Pleasant Trees. I have several probably some of my new questions, but how large are some of these trees? I haven't looked at this site, um, site. So the larger the tree, the more carbon that you cause. So if you take away a lot of large trees, that's gonna take a really major difference in our. The other thing is with the trees going off, actually, there are several things connected with that. Is there any benefit from the lumber that is taken off of there? I don't know what happens to it. Where do you put all the ground up stumps? And also, if you take that many trees, you said there was a steep slope, so let me hear. The trees themselves absorb a lot of water. So have you accounted for the absorption of trees versus grass? Mentioning the grass, you can get mixes that are native grasses, which are also very important for pollinators. So that's one consideration you could do with the planting. How successful are your plantings? How successful are your plantings? A lot of times the maintenance is poor and they just go over into various things that you're not necessarily wanting. And it does, these disturbances can increase the tendency to go to invasives. The other thing is, what is, since the trees absorb a lot of water, are you counting that groundwater runoff that's below the ground, not, not the stuff I'm discussing? That, that will be increased and what happens to that and the land below it?
Yes, are they, did you wanna answer, or does anyone wanna answer, or there's one more statement?
Answer some of my apologies if I don't hit on all the topics, but we have taken into account in our stormwater modeling, the absence of trees here to a meadow type cover type beneath the raise, and then also taking into consideration the array kinda detracts a bit from that cover type. So we have taken that into consideration in our analysis. As far as the size of trees, I, we haven't done a specific measurement of the tree or an analysis of the trees on site as far as, you know, what would be good for resale or what, you know, what would be good for firewood, that would require analyses of what's out there. I will say though, that as far as the stumps, stump grinds, what we we reuse those for erosion and sediment control and those are really the best in my experience. That's better than a silt fence, better than silt sock, putting up, using those wood strands from the, from the grinds with stumps to create a burn, to prevent any sediment erosion, that's that's kind of the one, I guess, one benefit of having so many steps to grind, that we will have a lot of material to ensure that sediment transposals is a big one thing.
Also, you said you were gonna dispose of soil you've done on the site and where does that go on top of what they know that you're not defending for destroying?
Yeah, actually, that reminded me of another point I wanted to mention, as far as the soil, so the amount of soil that we would be actually excavating, would be for the concrete pads. And it's a very small amount for the size of the site, so we basically effectively lose it on site, which would just be spreading it in an area reseeding it and which is being kind of blended into the existing topography. I did wanna mention one thing about reseeding, we have had a lot of luck. One challenge is reseeding in areas that require grading. So when they strip the topsoil, do some earthwork, put the topsoil back, it's tougher to get the grass to re-vegetate in those areas than areas where you try to keep the existing topsoil, obviously, there is the stumping, grubbing that disturbs it, but to the extent possible, that's one, another reason I try to minimize the actual topography grading, because it's just just one more factor that makes it more difficult.
There's also a lot of soil compaction.
Yes, exactly.
So one last, and then I'll say.
I don't have a question, everything will answer. I live on fifty-four Upper Liberty Street. I work in Autobahn. The Autobahn property, when we bought it, was privately owned. At around the middle of eighties, towards the end of eighties, I don't know yet if you were here. M C I came in, all right, and was going to put on top of the mountain huge antennas, you know, those dishes?
Communication towers.
Can be communication towers, they were very attractive. So when you drove by Plainfield Pond, you would see those items on top. And everybody saw it, because it was absolutely, you know how technology moves extremely fast. What you do and could be absolute in five years. And unfortunately, there was a little bug or a kind of killer found, and so they started. So all I wanna point out to you is what's happening is you need to consider the environment and what it's gonna do, and you might be so quickly absolute. That's my question.
Thank you, everyone. So it's nine fifteen, I'm gonna suggest that we adjourn the meeting and reconvene in two weeks if that's acceptable. Today is the eleventh, that would make it the on this October twenty-five. September twenty. Or, or the twenty-fourth. So we will reconvene the September twenty-five at seven P M. And I would like to ask permission for the planning board to walk the site at six P M before the meeting. Either with the applicant or the homeowner, it doesn't need to be. But I think it might be good sense for us to at least get a chance to walk the property, see it for ourselves. There's a road that goes right down to the camp you can see and get a handle on the actual layout line. So, so for the board, if you did meet here at six and go to the property and then reconvene the public area itself.
Question, Peter?
Yes.
Will you still repeat comments from us?
Yes, yes, if you have additional comments, email them to planning@plainfield dot, whatever the email address is.
Towns dot plainfield dot M A dot U S.
Or mail them to the town hall, we'll accept them. Anybody that has anything they would like to leave as comments from tonight to also be in the record, we will accept those tonight. And I wanna thank you for coming out. I think this conversation has been very useful. I wanna thank the applicant for bearing with us, this has been a long evening for everyone. So thank you very much and we'll see you in two weeks.